I've got six o'clock on the big clock on the wall there, so we're gonna get started. We have Jake Flood to gavel us in tonight. He is the son of Travis and Abby Flood. Jake attends Shawnee Middle School and he's in the seventh grade. So we're gonna let him take over.
I call this meeting to order.
Good job, buddy. Alrighty, so let's see. We have, um, called order, right? Let's...
Matthews?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
What?
Here.
Bolt?
Here.
Rutherford? Seymour?
Here.
Salford?
Here.
Alrighty. So we will have our invocation. We have Pastor Ian Brown from Life Church. So welcome Pastor.
If you'd join me in an attitute of prayer. Lord, I thank you so much for every individual in this room, those who are elected and those who are in attendance. God, we thank you for a community that cares for its people. We thank you that you've called us to be good neighbors, to love others more than ourselves, to put others first. And so, God, I thank you for everyone who's here, the passion that they have to see our community be more and better than it is. And we pray that the decisions that are made here tonight move us forward, move us closer, build bridges, and help continue to build this community in the way in which you intend it. I thank you for the nonprofits represented in this room tonight, the ones that continue to meet needs and as we continue to build awareness and to meet needs for those who are less fortunate and hurting in our community, God, I pray that you continue to guide them. For every elected leader here, Lord, I pray that you would guide them, that they would put the needs of our community ahead of their own thoughts and processes, that they would process this from what is best for those that they serve. I thank you for selfless leaders and people who chase after you. I thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight. I pray that you would bless this meeting and help us to make decisions that put you first. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Alrighty, so now I had a gentleman to do the flag salute, but I don't see him, so if you would, join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so item two. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Item one, citizen participation. So if anyone would like to come speak, if you would, sign in, let us know who you are. And you have three minutes to talk, 12 minutes on any one subject. And just like, just like every time, so welcome. It's gonna take three minutes to write this down. That's alright, you take your time.
I'm Mike Little, lifelong citizen of Shawnee, former city commissioner and builder developer. And it's come to our attention, dealing with the city last fall, for obtaining lots through the county for COCA on a project we hope to start here in the near future, that some other lots became available through the county. And I had talked to my attorney and we approached the county and they declared a surplus about a month ago. And they come up for bid at the courthouse next Monday. But unfortunately, my due diligence didn't work very good. I pulled up what the county, what the city had as far as lends on them for tearing houses down, but they had some judgments also. And some of those judgments will run as high as $15,000 or $20,000. And my best approach the last few years has been to try to come up with a lot that I could formally get for around $10,000. Now, the lots that were given last fall by the county and then approved by the city, we'll go through a process of having the title cleared up and we'll fight that battle when that comes along. But in the meantime, I was trying to buy some affordable houses. We have sold our subdivision across from St. Gregory's and I just got some guys to keep busy and I'm looking to try to build a, you know, $135,000, $140,000 house. And I can give you some examples of that, but what brought me here was I talked to Kevin Kalis and he said the city had been talking about the possibility of streamlining the ability to get lots to individuals and/or builders as they tore houses down. And I would like to say that I would wholeheartedly appreciate that and would like to see that happen and would not want to get into any type of conflict with, of interest with certain corporate firm or myself if I used them. And I know there was some discussion when they were giving to COCA last fall, but anyway, I'd just like to give you an example of some of the lots, some of the things we've done. And...
Thanks, Mike.
Sorry to spring this on you, but it just all kinda happened overnight. And, but anyway, I'm looking for affordable lots. We've built houses, I have since '73 in Shawnee when I was starting, when I was in college. And you may recall, if you've been here very long, we've built 55 houses scattered throughout town, approximately 15 years ago, in '06 and '07. Worked with the city and the county. And then since then, I've built various houses from time to time when things slow down. So that's all I'm here for is to just let you know that I'm in favor of if that can be streamlined. And I called Rebecca, but I haven't got to talk to her about that. And, but Kevin Kalis asked me to come here and I'd talk to Bob Weaver a little bit about it. And that's what I'm here for and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you.
And I'd be happy to come back and be on the agenda if that needs to be happening later on down the road.
Appreciate it. Our, one thing I need to point is our rules right now don't allow us to respond, so we're not, we're not trying to be rude or anything like that.
Oh, I understand. I totally understand.
And we'll kinda sit here and smile for the moment, but thank you, Mike.
There's not really a whole lot of affordable housing in Shawnee, so this is maybe an avenue to help with that. Thank you, thanks for your time.
Anybody else? We'd love to hear from you. There we go, one in the back. Very good. How are you, sir?
Just fine, how are you?
Very well.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to visit with y'all. I'm Kenny Sparks. My wife Rita is here with me and we, in April, bought or I guess leased property on Twin Lakes. And while we were going through that process, we were pleased to see that there are some rules, restrictions, and guidelines and things that need to be followed when you're doing certain things. And during the course of our stay out there, since we've had the lease, something's come up that we want to get clarification on. And the Airbnbs, we're not, we're not one to try to cause problems, but, but we'd like to have some explanation or counsel, I guess you could say, on what is permissible and what is not. In our reading, it appears that the city actually notifies the people within 300 feet of a conditional use permit and then you have the opportunity to come in. And that, I don't think, happened in our case. And so, we'd just like to, at some point in the future here, have the opportunity to voice our views. And there's a process and we'd just like to see the process utilized. So, and I guess that's about it for me. Oh.
Yeah, if you would, please sign in for us.
I'll make my mark. You might not be able to read as I'm going in such a hurry.
That's alright, I can't read my own, so don't sweat that. I definitely should've been a doctor.
I always wanted to be one, I just wasn't smart enough to be one.
There you go.
I'm just gonna give you my mailing address, 'cause I don't know. Oh, here it is, right here. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to come talk to us tonight? There we go. How are you doing tonight?
Very good. Back from the lake just in time to clean up.
Take your time. It's no rush.
I just have one simple question that I'd like to see if the council or commissioner can answer for us tonight. After speaking with several different people who are very much and beyond in the know, are we or are we not, at this moment, an actual Shawnee certified Blue Zone city? Or a Blue Zone certified city? So that's really the only thing I'd like to know.
Appreciate it. Alright, very good, thank you. Would anyone else like to come and address the commission? Come on forward. How are you, sir?
Hello, how are you?
Very well.
My name is Jay Murphy. I have, me and my wife and I, we have a leased property on Shawnee Lake at 15509 Nickens. And we purchased that in '17 and then we got some new neighbors earlier this year. Towards the end of July, around July 23rd, I got a text from him that he was gonna be operating an Airbnb and he had renters the next night. I had, from a concern that I wasn't, I didn't like that. I thought there was a process that they had to go through to do that. And as far as reading my lease, it said there was no subletting. And with an Airbnb, they leave the property and they let the people take over the property for as long as they rent. That's how an Airbnb, they rent it on the internet. So there's no vetting or anything. He proceeded to tell me that people paying that much, you wouldn't have any problems out of and all that. And I said, well, that's, you know, that doesn't, how much somebody pays for something doesn't mean whether they're gonna cause problems or not. But he assured me he did all the procedures, he had talked to the city attorney, city attorney said there wasn't anything that allowed it or disallowed it. But, you know, in my lease, it says you can't sublet. And it says forbnbs, they have to go through a process of getting zoning and stuff like that, special use permits. And we have to be notified within 300 feet to make sure everybody's... The problem with where we're at is everybody is right on top of each other. There's no fencing, there's no borderlines or anything. So I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that I would, and I would like, you know, I'd like to know what is the, what is the procedure of doing that? So, you know, we come in and paid our lease the other day and, and at that time, as far as I know, they have never, they've never applied for a permit to run an Airbnb. So, that's, uh... That's my concern tonight.
Okay. Well, appreciate you passing that on to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Nobody else? Okay, go and go and gone. We'll move on to number two, consider approval of consent agenda. Is there anything that any of the commissioners would like to hold from consent agenda? Not hearing anyone, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Is it Mark? Alrighty. Alright, so we have a motion and a second, so we'll call the question. Let's see, we have four in favor and two abstentions. So motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, let's see, we, number three, we've got animal of the week, so animal control and pet of the week. Looks like we got a dog tonight. How are you guys?
Pretty good, how are you?
Good.
I'm Officer Leathers. This is a shelter volunteer, Melody, and she'll answer any questions about the dog.
Well, can you tell us about the dog?
Her name is Luna. She is about 10 to 12 years old. A little bit of an old girl, super sweet. She doesn't get along great with other dogs, but she just seems kinda old and cranky. Right with humans, and she can still play tennis ball.
Old and cranky.
She is our girl of the week. We're trying to find her a good place to go.
Yeah. So probably someplace by herself then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She'd be a good farm dog.
Oh, yeah.
Be a great farm dog.
There we go. Okay. Anybody got any questions about the farm dog? I think Benny ought to. Thank you guys very much. Okay. Item four, we have a mayor's proclamation for diaper awareness week. And I guess I will come down front and attempt to read that.
Candita, this is our volunteer coordinator.
Candita, how are you? So, we have a proclamation, if I can get my glasses back on, for diaper awareness week. So I will, I will read this. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry and healthy can adversely affect the health and well-being of babies, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys and research studies report that one in three families struggles with diaper need and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. Children go through six to 12 diapers each day during the two to three years they wear diapers. In fact, purchasing enough diapers to keep a baby or toddler clean, dry, and healthy can consume 14% of a low-wage family's post-tax income, making it difficult to obtain a sufficient supply. And whereas, a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. Without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention and may prevent parents from attending work or school, thereby hurting the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas, the people of Shawnee recognize that diaper need is a public health issue and addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for state's families and communities and improve health for children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas, Shawnee is proud to be home to trusted, community-based organizations including Legacy Parenting Center that recognize the importance of diapers and ensuring health and providing economic stability for families and thus distribute diapers to families through various channels. And whereas, Legacy staff and volunteers served on the front lines of Shawnee's COVID-19 pandemic response, helping families in our communities weather the crisis. And while experiencing double the demand for diapers due to the pandemic and economic shutdown, our Legacy did everything in their ability to increase diaper distributions and support children and families in need of immediate assistance now. Therefore, I, Ed Bolt, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim the week of September 21st through the 27th, 2020, to be diaper awareness week. In the City of Shawnee, the City of Shawnee thanks the aforementioned diaper bank, their staff, volunteers, and donors for their courageous service during the crisis. And encourage the citizens of Shawnee to donate generously to Legacy Parenting Center, diaper drives, and those organizations that collect and distribute diapers to those struggling with diaper need, so that all of Shawnee's children and families can thrive and reach their full potential. In the City of Shawnee dated 21st day of September, signed by myself and you see us on our city clerk. So, thank you very much for all you guys do. And if you want to maybe take a minute and tell folks a little bit about Legacy, that would be...
Sure.
Would be great.
My name's Lacey. I'm the director at Legacy Parenting Center. We are a nonprofit here in Shawnee that's been in operation about five years. We serve families pregnancy to age five with parent education, resources, mentoring. We have experienced a significant increase, about 61%, in families needing help with diapers throughout the pandemic, whether that was from job loss or just they can't get to the store, they don't have them at the store, things like that. Our youngest clients are 14-years-old, mothers in middle school, to grandparents raising grandchildren. We don't have any income requirements, we help anyone that needs help. And it's a hand up and not a handout because they participate in our Earn While You Learn program. They get education on healthy pregnancies, infant development, child development, things like that. We did establish through the pandemic an emergency assistance program, so we are able to help families that aren't quite ready to partner in our Earn While You Learn program, but we can still help meet those basic needs that the babies need. You don't think about it, but a clean diaper to a baby is as important as food and shelter. So this is a big deal for us and there's very, there's a lot of people in the community that are stepping up to host diaper drives and to collect diapers this month. So there's a lot of people in this room, First United Bank, United Way, Community Market, Community Renewal have supported us immensely. So you're gonna start seeing a lot about diaper need week and we're very excited about this and the opportunity to help families, so...
Thank you very much for all you guys do.
Thank you.
Alrighty, number five, consideration of a contract with Holloway, Updike, and Bellin Inc. for engineering services for Whittaker Street rehabilitation. So Brad, you're up.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioner. This is an agreement for engineering services to rehab the portion of Whittaker in front of Horseman School. And then it would, would also rehab Draper down to Highland. That's, that will relocate the, replace the water line, new curb, handicap ramps, drainage issues. It would resolve those as well.
Very good. So right now, what we're looking to do is, for the engineering services at this point is kinda what we're looking to do, folks. Important first step. Anybody got questions or comments?
Brad, it's just one block just south of Horseman. It's not beyond one block on the Whittaker Street, right? Or is it just...
It does extend somewhat to the east of Draper. As what we discussed...
Past the intersection then?
Yes, sir, just past, just past the, inside the intersection of Draper and Whittaker and that's, that's to address some drainage issues.
Okay, yeah, that's been a problem for a long time.
Yes, sir.
That's kind of a long block, isn't it? Almost two blocks long?
It is, it is.
If I remember right. Yeah, it's...
Yeah, it's 696 feet.
Yeah, that's about two blocks then, yeah. Definitely needs the attention, that's for sure. I'm kind of excited we get to do something down that part of town. I think that's great.
School was as well.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion.
A motion to enter into the agreement.
Thank you, sir. Alright, we have a motion and a second, so... Travis? Alrighty, so let's call the question then. Thanks, Brad. And that passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Alrighty, so we have number six, consider resolution, declare real property located at 229 North Kickapoo Avenue, AP Block 19 through lots 29 through 32 as surplus property, authorizing staff to solicit bids to sell the property and set a minimum bid. So Seth, you're up this time.
Yeah, afternoon commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
This is for, as you said, 229 North Kickapoo, which is the red building at the corner of 10th and Kickapoo. It's formerly Templeton Appliance Repair. The property was acquired as part of the right-of-way acquisition process for the Kickapoo Street job and this is just allowing staff to solicit bids and set a bid minimum. So happy to answer any questions for you guys.
Here, I'm full of questions tonight.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is the first of probably many. And why, why are we isolating just one piece of property at one time?
Yeah, well, I think that the other ones are not complete as far as negotiations and so, and then as well, we received a little bit of interest in this property, so it made sense at this time to go ahead and move forward while there was interest in it.
Okay, so there has been interest?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
With how the property currently sits and the, the expansion of the road, will it be able to be used as it is currently sitting or will there have to be a significant amount of changes done to the property?
So the property could be maintained as it is. The necessity of the total take was just given by the settlement of the price and the current value. So it could be maintained as it is, but I don't know, I mean, whoever purchased it will have, you know, the right to do it how they choose, so...
Okay. But the building cannot remain. That's coming down.
The building could remain.
It could?
It could, yes.
Gosh, I looked at that today and I...
Yeah, there's actually a pretty good gap between the back of curb and the existing sidewalk, so the, the new curb line would be right at the sidewalk edge, so...
Wow, okay.
So it'd be a tight squeeze.
It would definitely be a tight squeeze, but it could remain, yeah.
And even with the front door being that close to the existing curb?
Okay.
It's not one you'd wanna rent out the front door without checking traffic that way.
No, because there's no existing parking there. There's parking on the side.
Any other, no, this side's been quiet.
Good behavior.
There you go. There you go. Okay, thank you. I guess we're, some questions we'd entertain, a motion.
Make a motion to put it up for sale? A second.
Okay. Alrighty, we got a motion and a second. Call on the city attorney then. We haven't heard from her yet.
My favorite job. A resolution declaring certain real property located at 229 North Kickapoo Avenue, AP Block 19, lots 29 through 32, surplus, and no longer needed for city purposes, describing said property and authorizing staff to advertise for sealed bids for the sale of said property.
Very good. Alrighty, so we'll call the question. Looks like motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a public hearing. Will we, are we going through those or are those...
We wanna read the title.
Okay, so, "Public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 1018 West Benedict Street, containing 0.19 acres from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C3 Highway Commercial District, case number P13-20, applicant Ken Stafford, representing Carroll and Stafford, 2013, revocable trust deferred from August 17, 2020, City Commission Meeting."
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we're gonna request to defer this item due to an software issue with posting of the agenda. Just out of an abundance of caution, we feel, we've discussed with the city attorney and believe that deferring these to make sure that we have these items readdressed at a future planning commission meeting, so we have proper recommendation from planning commission for you all to take into consideration.
Okay, so we need a motion to defer then?
Motion to defer.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mark. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Are we gonna need to read all this? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, are we gonna need to read all this with a, for deferring? Probably not?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I guess it's called a question.
Just a motion to defer?
Motion to defer. Yes, ma'am. To a future meeting?
To a future meeting.
Future meeting. There we go. So, yeses are 6-0, so we'll defer that to a future meeting. Number eight, "Public Hearing in Consideration of an Ordinance to Rezone Property Located at 815 North Harrison Avenue, Containing 1.66 Acres From C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C3 Highway Commercial District with a CUP, Conditional Use Permit, For the Purpose of a Cellular Communications Tower, Case Number P14-20, Applicant Troy Williams, Branch Communications, AT&amp;T." So I guess we, I think we have a similar story here.
Yes, sir, yeah, for the same reason described in item seven, we were, staff will request a referral to a future meeting.
Okay. Okay, Daniel?
One second.
And Travis? Okay, we have a motion and a second to defer to a future meeting. So, call the question. I think yours didn't go through.
Sorry.
Oh, there you go. Alright, that passes 6-0, thank you very much. Well, that was a long one too, you got out of...
You saved me.
Yeah, really. Hey, number nine, "Public Hearing in Consideration of an Ordinance to Rezone Property Located at 6-20 West MacArthur Street, Containing 1.29 Acres From C3 Highway Commercial to C3 Highway Commercial with a CUP, Conditional Use Permit, For the Purpose of an Outdoor Gathering Space Containing Food Trucks, On-Premise Sale and Consumption of Alcohol, Pop-Up Shops and Restaurants, Case Number P15-20, Applicant GCR Sunset Enterprises LLC, Deferred by Planning Commission to the October 7, 2020, Meeting." So, I think we do the...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, request to defer to a future meeting.
Okay, so basically same story as the other two then, okay, so...
Make a motion to defer.
Alrighty, Mark? You have a second anywhere?
One second.
Daniel? Alrighty, so we have a motion and a second, and we won't get to listen to the reading, so how about...
One second.
I'm sorry, it was Daniel?
Daniel.
So, there we go. My kids didn't go through. There we go. There we go, so motion passes 6-0. Thank you guys very much. Okay, "Public Hearing in Consideration of an Ordinance to Rezone Property at 2124 West Benedict Street, Containing 1.00 Acres From A1 Rural Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial District For the Purpose of Indoor Cultivation of Medical Marijuana, Case Number P16-20, Applicant Executive Home Rentals LLC, Applicant withdrew application."
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, for the same reason...
So we defer action on this one, all is your recommendation, okay? Anyone wanna?
Motion to defer.
Alrighty, Bob?
One second.
And Travis? Alright. So we have a motion and a second, so we'll call the question. And that one also passes 6-0. So we are now down to new business already, any new business?
No new business.
No new business. Commissioners' comments, we maybe start down your end?
Because I'm excited to be a part, and looking forward to working with all the city staff, and Chance, thank you for your warm welcome and giving me setup, and looking forward to working with you gentlemen, and seeing Shawnee continue to develop and thrive, so that's all I got for tonight.
I've got a couple things. First one, there's a, when OG&E made their presentation here several meetings ago, I think they indicated that when there were things like traffic lights that had been run over, that they'd be replaced or removed within a month or so. Specifically, the one in front of Lock on Kickapoo that has remained down for much longer than that, if we could just get attention to that. Every time I drive by, I keep meaning to bring it up, so... And the one other thing is, Mr. Morse brought up his concern about the blue zones. Has, my understanding is that it is now certified as a blue zones community. And if, I just wanna get a clarification for his purpose as to whether or not that has occurred. Because we were there at that ceremony, and I thought it was named that, so...
I understand we are, yes, sir.
We are, we are, okay. Okay, that's all I have.
I would like to, if you were here playing on talking or doing business involved in one of the meetings that got deferred, like to say thank you for your patience, and we're very sorry, but sometimes things happen, and we hope to resolve that as soon as we can. And again, thank you for being patient. This same thing, as I understand it, to the best of my knowledge, we are a certified blue zone city, and should, will be moving forward as that. And just thank you again for our amazing staff working so hard to take us in the right direction. Appreciate all of your efforts.
I really don't have anything tonight.
Nothing tonight?
Nothing tonight.
No?
No? Well, you guys are quiet down your end tonight. I don't have a whole lot, I mean, I would echo what the other two commissioners had to say. I mean, my understanding is we are a certified blue zone city now, that we've gone through that certification process for the last, I don't know, three, three and a half years, and apparently that was successful, and they had a nice ceremony out there at the Avidus Foundation lawn, and so I think that's a nice accomplishment for our community. So the other thing, and I may need help from Commissioner Flood on this, is Thursday evening down at, there's a photo registration...
Oh, yes.
Event, and what's the name of the, it's from 3 to 7 Thursday down at...
It's the Rolling Hills Community Center.
Rolling Hills.
At the end of Maine and Bryant.
Certainly none of us would even attempt to tell you how to vote, but it is important that we all vote, so you get your voice out, that's how you get counted. And, you know, like a lot of communities, we don't vote in big enough numbers, and sadly, a lot of folks aren't registered to vote. So I know there's an effort underway right now by PAVE and some other members of the community to get people registered so they have that opportunity. We have big elections coming up in November, and then, you know, they'll go on from here on, so here's your opportunity to get registered, and we'd love for you to do that if you haven't registered yet, so...
Yes, and they will be taking all the proper steps to social distance and make sure that everybody that comes can register and still feel safe in doing so.
Without a doubt.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alrighty, so from here, we go to the airport authority. So, consider the consent agenda. There's really nothing to pull off of there or even look at, so need a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Second, Mark? Thank you, sir. Alrighty, so let's call the question. Motion passes 6-0, new business?
Still new business, sir.
And we are adjourned, so we will go to Shawnee Municipal Authority. So, let's see, again, nothing to call there, so I need a motion to approve minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Travis?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Alright, we have a motion and a second, so let's call the question. Motion passes 6-0. Any new business?
No new business.
Alrighty, so we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening, we appreciate when you come and talk with us.